I call this meeting to our, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven P. M., thirty-nine Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. Caitlin, would you call the roll, please? We'll have to do so audibly.
Right. Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Barstow?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here. If you would, please, let's stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see you, please. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Ah, yes, sir. I'd like to make the motion that we add the following item to agenda under new business to renew the contract with the Berkeley Group on a month-to-month basis.
Second.
All right, Mr. Warren, Mr. Dudley, any discussion?
I have one item I'd like to discuss. There's an item in the consider agenda, and I was wondering if we can move that, item D, move that to the regular agenda. I'd like to have a discussion on that before it is approved.
Oh, which one?
Item D.
You say E as in Edward?
Delta.
D. Gotcha. Do I have a second?
All right, I'm gonna open this up. Do you want to do these in two different votes? You want to do these in one?
Okay.
All right, I've got the items to be added.
Okay.
We'll include that revision in there as well.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on Mr. Warren's motion.
All right, Mr. Ingram, let me get your vote verbally.
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Okay, and it's not gonna reflect correctly, but this will be unanimous.
Okay, yes. And Mr. Scares, go ahead with your motion.
Yeah, I'd just like to move item D in the consider agenda to the regular agenda so we can have a discussion. There was some, I think it might be a conflict of interest in his appointment, even though it's your power to appoint whoever you want. I think someone else should probably take on that position, but I just wanted to put that out there and have a discussion on it before we vote on it in the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Jesse's second.
I think Jesse's second now.
I couldn't hear you.
Jesse's second.
All right, Mr. Barstow, did you second that?
I'm gonna.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor, cast your vote. Okay, Caitlin called the vote.
Mr. Dalton?
No.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
And Mr. Scares, I have yours here. Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Barstow?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes. All right, any other items to be added? Okay, what about a, you're good, Caitlin?
Yes, and that was, let's see, that was approved. It just doesn't show.
That's okay. Yes, ma'am.
Because we have technical difficulties.
I guess for the viewing public and those in, in attendance, the beauty of the internet and technology, I don't know what to say, but what about a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda with the additional items and changes.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. What about a second? All right, Mr. Dudley, any discussion? Okay, Caitlin?
All right, and those that can, if you want to go ahead and cast your votes. All right, and Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're good?
All right, yep.
Okay.
And now we're onto consent.
Hey, what about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented in our package.
Okay.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Okay, go ahead and call the roll, Caitlin.
All right, those that can vote on your iPads, if you'll go ahead and cast that vote. Uh, Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, that brings us up to presentations. What's your order on that, Caitlin?
We are gonna do the resolution presentations first, if that's okay.
I couldn't hear you.
The resolutions first, so the first one we have is Jack Garrett.
All right.
You gentlemen, come on down front.
I don't even know what that means.
It's such an honor to be able to present you with this resolution, Jack. I don't know what ploy they used to get you over here, but they did, and I'm gonna read this till you know I'm gonna have some comments, and if any colleagues would like to say something, they surely can. This is a resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four dash zero two honoring Jack Garrett's retirement. Virginia, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors adopted the following resolution at this business meeting on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, where he has, after almost forty-four years, Jack Garrett signed off on his last broadcast at WBTM, WAKG on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas graduating from George Washington High School in nineteen seventy-four, Jack was one of three Everett College students to earn the New English and Journalism Combined major in nineteen seventy-eight, and whereas as an intern, Garrett started writing immediately and doing newscast and was offered a job afterwards working the evening newscast, and whereas he worked at the two stations until he was forty years old and then accepted a job as bureau chief of WSET, the Lynchburg-based ABC affiliate, and whereas he covered news in Danville, Martinsville, and South Boston, breaking the news of the national tobacco settlement and winning an award on a documentary he produced about tobacco, and whereas in twenty eighteen, Garrett received first place in the Virginia Associated Press Awards in three categories: Best Reporter for Outstanding News Operation of the Virginias, Best Feature Human Interest Story for Danville, Remembrance of Virginia Tech Victims on the tenth anniversary of the tragedy, and Best Spot News for his reporting on Danville's new police chief and community policing, and whereas in twenty nineteen, the station won the Big Kahuna, as Jack called it, for its coverage of Hurricane Michael, which battered Danville as a tropical storm, and whereas in twenty twenty, he won the Galmore, Gallimore Award, which honors a Virginia broadcaster for outstanding service in the public interest and exemplifies a commitment to journalism and reflects honorable on the news profession, and whereas Garrett was an asset and a loyal member of his community and faithfully performed his doodles, duties in a diligent and dependable manner. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board expresses its sincere appreciation to Garrett for his dedication of time towards the radio news media community and congratulates him on a well-deserved retirement. William V. Ingram, Chairman, Clarence Monday, Clerk, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. There you go, Jack. Y'all give him a hand. That's a whole lot of where is's, but, uh, Jack, I just want to tell you that through your forty years, you and I have worked together a lot. You were the kind of reporter, but if I gave you information on a story and I said, "Jack, don't repeat this," you didn't repeat it, but you had such a masterful way of putting together good stories, and I think what I'm most grateful about was working on the Danville-Pittsburgh Cancer Return to the Coke Plant Project. You were so instrumental in making it such a great success, which helped so many cancer victims in our area, and you've just been a jewel. We hate to let you go, but I'm gonna let you sign off one last time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I just always tried to be fair. I hope I was. Thank, thanks to everyone.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. If your family would come up. Ms. Charlotte, how'd you get him over here? Oh, yeah. I bet you're about to starve, aren't you? This is his son, Jack, and I forget all the girls, Charlotte, his wife. All right, good. Thank y'all so much for coming, sir. Thank you. All right. Hey, get back over here. Pitched that. Yeah. This one is almost as cool as that one. Some of y'all ain't gonna believe this, but I would like for the Tunstall High School basketball team to come forward with their coaches and anybody else you brought with you. I'm extremely proud of this one, just like I am with Jack, because I'm a seventy-five model of Tunstall High School. To those that thought I'd never get out of there, voila. Coach Morrison, you come on up here beside me. All right, that's one of the guys on the back row. I said, "Which one is Coach Morrison?" He said, "The guy that's bald-headed." Maybe some of you guys could come on this side. I had several to pick from, and Brian, if you'd come over here, please? Okay. Yes, sir, you get right here. Got everybody? This is really cool. This is resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four dash zero four honoring Tunstall High School Boys Basketball Team's co-district championship. In Virginia, at the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, the following resolution was presented and adopted, whereas the Tunstall High School Trojan Boys varsity basketball team won the Co-Piedmont District Championship for their first district title since twenty twelve on February tenth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas their eighteen victories to only six defeats capped off the best season in twenty-plus years. During the streak, the Trojans were able to compile a ten-and-two district record while setting numerous school records, and whereas DeDrick Rogers. I know why you're here, Linda. That's your boy? Okay, it just clicked. That's good. Was named first-team all-region, first-all Piedmont District, River City number-one all-district, and Piedmont District Player of the Year and River City Sports Co-Player of the Year, and where's he at, by the way? Hey, congratulations. Is that your mom or grandma? Okay, gotcha. And whereas Demarcus Brown led the team in scoring rebounds and blocks while named second-team all-region, first-team all-district River City, first-team all-district city and River City Sports Rookie of the Year. Where you at? All right, congratulations. And whereas Jalen Edmonds and Bryson Poole were also honored with second-team all-region honors, while Ashton Hammack received River City Sports Honorable Mention, and whereas Tunstall finished its dream season and postseason award spree with Coach Demarcus Morrison being named Piedmont District Coach of the Year and River City Sports Co-Coach of the Year, as the team continues moving forward with their motto, "Think big, there's power in one." Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board expresses its deepest congratulations and admiration to the Tunstall Trojans for their twenty twenty-two co-district championship season, given under my hand this nineteenth day of April, twenty twenty-two, William V. Ingram, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, and Clarence Monday, Clerk of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Congratulations, sir. I, I know, I know there'll be a couple of speakers here, but Coach Morrison, would you like to, like to have a few words?
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all the board's members for acknowledging the guys and all their hard work. I think it means a lot to our school administration, teachers, family members out here.
This is great. Thank you so much. Brian?
Absolutely. I'm so proud of Coach Morrison and our kids, but certainly this is something that's a true testament to our community, and we thank you very much for this. I see Dr. Jones and Mr. Burton here this evening. Thank you, guys, for being here, but I cannot express how proud I am of all of you, and thank you so much for this.
Oh, absolutely. And Sammy, Dr. Jones, y'all would please come up before we can have you in the picture. Gentlemen, listen, any of you want to say anything? Don't want to put you on the spot, but want to give you the opportunity. I know some stuff on your grandma. Just hook me up. Are you guys, anybody, any of the other coaches? Okay. All right. Okay. I, I don't even know anymore. Hey, I don't, I don't wanna block you.
No, no, no.
Come on up here. All right, congratulations. Thank you so much. You shake some hands. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any progress on them iPads? Apparently not. Okay. Under eight B, I believe up next is Dr. Betty Jo Foster. Come on up, Dr. Foster. So good to see you.
Thank you so much for letting me come. When I began my term as interim president at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research, one of the first things the board asked me to do is try to get out there and let people know what we do, and what a great place this is. So I promise not to take a lot of your time, but I am very appreciative of your allowance to be here tonight, and I know for some of you, you've heard this before, so I apologize for that, but I will try to give you just a brief. Of all the places I've ever worked, I think this is one of the most exciting places I've ever been. Every day is different. Every day is something new happening there that's really making an impact on this region. So I'll just give you a brief overview there. In this slide, you see the main building that you see so often. We were founded in two thousand two, thank you, opened up in two thousand four. We're not a state agency. Of the five higher ed centers, there are two called political subdivisions, and we're one of those. It has lots of advantages and sometimes a disadvantage. We don't get all the perks, cola raises and things like that that state agencies do, but we do have a little more flexibility, so it's worked well for us. We were funded by the Tobacco Commission along with federal, state, and local monies. Our mission overall, when everybody asks you, is usually we say we're the regional catalyst for economic transformation. We could talk about that all night, but we think we're making a huge impact, and we continue to do so. We've served six counties, Franklin, Halifax, Henry, Mecklenburg, Patrick, and Pennsylvania, and two cities, Martinsville and Danville. And these slides are hard to read, so I'll just tell you about it, and you have a handout of that. You also have a handout of our strategic plan that was developed in the last twelve months and an overview. We, you know a lot about our conference center. Many of you have been there. You've participated in events there. We have a great hall that can accommodate about seven hundred fifty people. In addition, next to it is our atrium, which can hold about four hundred, and our auditorium about one twenty-five, and lots of breakout rooms that many of you have been in. Recently, we have housed a lot of job fairs. We've housed and hosted many events for local groups in our region. Danville Public Schools was there recently with a job fair and about four days of training, and I invite you to come to the Megabytes Cafe. It's back open every day from nine-thirty to one-thirty, and on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have a hot buffet. Our Hawkins Building, which is behind the, the main building that you saw in that first slide, you, many of you've been to that, probably to the opening of the Gene Haas Center for Integrated Manufacturing. We have an additive manufacturing lab that is used every day. Syntec is attached with high-bays tenants. Right now, BGF is there occupying our second floor. You've probably heard of our rapid-launch center. We have two companies in there right now. Companies, new companies come in. We call it launch because they get started there, then they move out and into their own facility, into their own plant. Morgan Olson started with us, and I know you're familiar with them, and now they have their own facility. Fast Tech and MEP are in that launch bay right now, in those bays. I was in a meeting recently in Charlottesville with lots of Department of Defense folks, and it made me really proud to be from this area when they looked at the CEO there at Fast Tech, and they're looking to make parts for submarine, and this, it's on a fast track. I'll tell you a little bit more in a second, and they looked to Richie at Fast Tech and said, "Can you make it happen, and can you do it in twelve months?" And of course, he said, "Yes." And so that's why I tell you it's so exciting, because of what's happening on a daily basis. You'll also, if you've visited our center recently, you'll see a new building going up across the street, what we call our Center for Manufacturing Advancement. It should be open in October. We're already negotiating with MOUs and contracts for, again, some ongoing training for local companies, but also launching facilities for new companies. ISO-certified labs, industry four-point-oh labs. I go over quite often, and I'm amazed at how quickly that's coming together. We really operate under five different areas, and I'll just briefly explain. You know advanced learning. That's where you hear that term go-tech all the time. We start in middle schools. I hope you've been to some of the middle schools and the center here near Chatham for your career in technical. It is exciting to walk in, see those middle schoolers. It is exciting to walk in, see those middle schoolers operating machinery, working in every field you can almost imagine with technology. And then we take them all the way through high school and into community college with dual credits. So if you haven't been to those middle schools, please take a look. We're offering, in all of this, in about 20 schools, Region 3, Region 1, Region 4. We're adding six new schools in the fall, and also talking to Region 4 and 5. So it will be across the state. And what makes me proud is we're the model. And so now they will be using us as that model. And I cannot begin to tell you, it's good and it's bad. We have visitors and tour groups in there almost every day. Now, the good is, that's great to show your stuff and be proud. What's, we're running on a time schedule, and so sometimes we're going, wow. We have a group coming in Thursday from India. So they're not always just from the United States. They were there last week from Washington State. Prior to that, California, you name it, almost every state's come in because they want to do it too. So that part is wonderful. The Youth Expo, I bet some of you participated. Usually out at the Ag Center, we usually have about 60 businesses and industries, and we bring in usually those 8th, 9th graders and let them explore industry. I asked a group the other day, "What's your best part?" What do you think they said? The things we get. That goodie bag. We like bags and water bottles and lanyards. You know, I wanted them to say, "Oh, I learned all about this industry." So, you know, we learn from that. If you want to attract attention, you better give them something. But I have participated, and I hope you will sometime, just to see those buses unload from all over the region and get to explore our local business and industry, with the hope they'll have an interest in working there one day. Lots of activity with our Work Ready Communities. We've been recognized in the state for that. Also, that Next Generation of Work, which we call our NOW Program, where we get high school students' real-world experiences. They partner with an industry. I served in a group last week, so we have teams, okay? And they're from the high schools. And usually, most of them are from our Governor's School or our Academy for Engineering Technology. And they come to our campus at 7:30 and leave on a bus at 11:30. So I won't tell you all the industries, but ones you would know. They partner with them, and the industry gives them a problem to solve. Now, this is what was exciting for me. At the end of that presentation, that presentation was on how to promote your company, marketing. And at the end, I heard the plant manager say to one gentleman, "Could you stay back for a minute?", and he offered him a job. And he is a senior in high school. So if he wanted a job right now, he goes, or he's willing to work with him as he goes through college and allows summer work. That's, you know, that gets me real excited. Lots of professional development for educators, and we do that in the summer, where we put them into industries and pay their scholarship to do that, and they learn what the industry's all about. And I've been in education all my life, and I've always believed you can't teach something you don't know how to do yourself. So they get out in those industries, experience it, touch it, feel it, come back and teach it. The regional engagement to advance community health, what we call REACH, is a part where we're working with public health, trying to make sure that's accessible to people and equitable. Lots of internships. I know Jesse served, I think, didn't you, on our intern? Did you serve this year on the Scholarship Committee? I'm not sure, but several people have in the community. We have internships and scholarships mainly in the STEM area. Maricor, I'm not going to go over everything. As I mentioned, we have 50 in Governor's School, 50 on the Academy for Engineering Technology on our campus every day. Some of the most well-behaved students I have ever seen in my life. We have not had a problem with that. In about a week, we're going to participate in a program called ASPIRE, and that's where we pick students in high school, and they come to us, and we have business and industry provide mock interviews for them. So what better experience than that's like they're applying for a job? And then we have training sessions. I'm going to do one for them on time management. We have the mobile app. If you ever want that to go somewhere, to a business or a place of schools, many places all over the state, we have a driver takes that lab. The technology's inside. You get in, you work with it, you play with it, and you see what can happen. Applied research. I didn't know much about that when I went there, but I've learned a lot, and I'm impressed. I didn't know much about beneficial bacteria. I didn't know much about what the endophytes were. But with Scott Loman, you know, telling me every day and showing me things, we're actually the nation's first plant endophyte research center. And what I, my takeaway from that is, we have a bank of endophytes. Industries throughout the world can buy one of those from us and test it. And if it makes it through all the testing, we have two almost at the end. That's big bucks for I A L R. So it's fascinating to watch that. You know about aerofarms? So they will tell you they came because of the institute. The Controlled Environment Act Center, we have a mini one, a small one. If you ever want to tour it, you have to robe up and cover everything on your body because it's a sterile environment, and go in, you can almost watch lettuce grow. That's how fast it grows. No pesticides, no chemicals, and that's on our campus too. Another greenhouse complex there with hydroponic systems. Precision agriculture. Do a lot with farmers. So the drones can go out, go over a field, decide where they need water, decide where they need more fertilizer, and help that farmer have a more productive crop there. Same thing with smart tables, where they watch the growth of plants. To me, it's like watching grass grow. It moves so slowly. But in the end, you have some good data to help you there. Economic development, you know all about that. I think this shot is from Tyson Foods. We have Linda Green with us, Southern Virginia Regional Alliance. This is the most important takeaway. In the last 10 to 15 years, we've had more prospects, and you know this better than I, coming into our area, and we hope to have some announcements soon. This is one of the most exciting things that have happened because of so many things happening, the Mega Park and other things, as they're very interested in us. Advanced manufacturing, you hear a lot about. We do a lot of teacher training there. The students have true-to-production floor work where the robots are there. They work just like as if they went into the plant. Again, rapid launch helps with that. We mentioned briefly, because you're going to see this more in the newspaper, the accelerated training in defense manufacturing. We're into our third cohort. It started yesterday. And we are committed to the Department of Defense to train X number of people every four months. We usually have about 48. They come from all of the United States. In the last two groups, we had one from Hawaii in each group. About two weeks ago, we were thrown a curveball when Department of Defense people called and said, "You must", they called it a foot stomping moment. I didn't know that military term, which means you will do it. "We're going to send you seven Afghanistan refugees, and we want them in this cohort." Now, I can't begin to tell you what that did to us. It's great, and they started yesterday, but we've got to get them in here. We've got to find a place for them to stay. We've got to give them stipends for food and clothes, and all the wraparound services that you can imagine. So on Saturday night, we had a lady picking them up at a bus station and at an airport, and they started training yesterday with guaranteed jobs going back out with certifications in things like welding, metrology, additive manufacturing, CNC, and now we've added non-destructive testing. So they will be certified. I went to a graduation recently, some of those young people, and not all young, they're all ages, had 10 certifications to walk out of there. Fast-paced, four months of training, then we bring in a new group. Again, in many meetings with Department of Defense, what makes me proud to live here and to work at the Institute is they actually look at us and say, "You're the model for the United States. You're going to start this model of training, then we're going to build three more centers like yours, one on the East Coast, well, excuse me, West Coast, New England area, and they haven't told us the third one, but we think it'll be somewhere in Central USA." But it makes you proud. Hope you saw recently the partnership with Old Dominion University and Patrick and Henry Community College, the first four-year degree in manufacturing engineering technology. They will partner with the community colleges, get their first two years, take their last two years at the Institute with ODU professors, in person and online, and finish that degree. And we've already receiving a lot of calls about that. Let me stop because I've probably told you more than you wanted to hear, but do you have questions?
Any questions?
I encourage you to go to app. Yes, sir.
I got a comment.
Okay.
And we don't get these often, but I actually got a text from somebody just now that was listening to you, and his daughter actually came, and you speak like you're excited about this thing.
I am.
But he says, "Thank Ms. Foster for the Governor's School offered at the Institute." His daughter graduated from there and Chatham High School with 56 college credits, and will graduate from Averit in three years and have a master's in four. So I won't give a name, but huge thank you.
Thank you. That's the kind of things we love to hear because we know it's making a difference. Any other questions? All of this and much more is on our website. Also, you have a couple handouts. I know we're in your packet, but I brought some other hard copies. So please call me at any time with any question. I'll try to answer those for you. And we'd love for you to come visit us and take a tour. That's where you really get excited, is to see it in action. Thank you very much.
I agree. I was going to tell you, I recently had a medical procedure. I was so excited, I wore a GO-Tech mask. And it went well, but I've been on two tours, and it's really enlightening, and I'm so proud of what you guys are doing. So, Dr. Foster, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Kaitlin, any more presentations?
That is all.
Thank you. All right, we down to Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressed to the Board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such residence or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the Board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the Board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. And I will make a note, we are going to strictly enforce that. You will not address any specific member. And I'm going to humbly request that you do not attack any constitutional officer. That is not what this is for. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent Chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Kaitlin, we have anybody signed up?
Yes, Jim Scares.
Mr. Scares, come on up. You have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Scares, and I live in the Westover District. First off, I would like to thank Interim County Administrator Mr. Monday and Director of Finance Kim Vanderhyde for their outstanding work on putting together a budget on short notice with great work that Mr. Smithman and Mr. Hicks left the county in, or the great condition that they left the county in, that allowed you to create a budget that did not raise the property taxes, tax rates for the county citizens. This was in spite of the financial missteps of the leadership of this Board. The leadership of this Board took it upon themselves to fire Mr. Smithman without cause and incur the cost of $209,000 for severance pay. The leadership of this Board threw out the Bright Minds Reassessment and flushed its cost of $800,000 down the toilet. This does not alleviate the requirement for reassessment to be done. It just means that the tax-paying citizens of this county get to pay for it twice. $500,000 has been earmarked in this budget to help pay for that reassessment. And next year's budget will also have an earmark to go towards that reassessment. So far, the leadership of this Board has cost the citizens of this county somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million due to their incompetence. These funds could have gone towards reducing the property tax rate for the citizens of this county. It's only because of the outstanding work of Mr. Smithman, Mr. Hicks, Mr. Monday, and Ms. Vanderhyde that kept our tax rate from going up. Last issue I would like to address is the fact that over 4,800 new structures were identified in the Bright Minds Reassessment that are not on the county tax rolls. This is tax revenue that the county is missing out on. A good portion of these structures are on commercial property, which is also taxed at a higher rate than residential property. For these structures to be added to the tax laws, it requires the Commissioner of Revenue to do her job and evaluate these structures and add them to the tax law. Even though the county has addresses and aerial photos of these structures, the Commissioner of Revenue has made it known that she is not going to reevaluate or evaluate these structures. This is a blatant neglect of her duties as Commissioner of Revenue. And pursuant to Virginia Election Code 24.2-233, this grounds to start a recall petition to have her removed from office and replaced with someone who will do the job required. I'm giving notice to this Board tonight that I have started the process to file a petition of recall for the Office of Commissioner of Revenue. If Ms. Board continues to neglect her duties as Commissioner of Revenue, then I hope she is prepared to face a recall in the coming months. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else, Kaitlin?
Yes, Dr. Martha Walker.
Dr. Walker, come on up. Good to see you again.
Mr. Ingram, Mr. Monday, members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I am representing Pittsavannians for a brighter future, which is our One-Cent Sales Tax Referendum Committee. So we are in full swing. As you know, in January, you approved that we put this on the ballot again in November. In February, the judge signed the order, and in March, our team got to work. So as you asked, many of you who talked to me said, "Please start earlier", and we've done that. And the volunteers are stepping up. We're visiting schools. We're talking to civic groups and community groups. And most importantly, we stand before you as the leaders of our county to say, "Please remember this every month on your Board agenda." And we ask that you perhaps put this as a presentation. Dr. Jones is with me this evening, along with Mr. Burton and Mr. Fitzgerald School Board members. And members of our team would be happy to come and make a presentation each month, if you will allow that. So I hope you will consider that. I also want you to know that we are very excited at the commitment that our business community in Pittsavanna County has made. As you know, campaigns are very expensive. You experience that every four years. And so we are finding that people are stepping up, and they are contributing, and we're very grateful to that. You have a handout at your place. It's a two-sided handout, and I think most of the people in the audience also have this. It lists on the side that has the most blue, it lists what are the key priorities for this campaign. What will One-Cent Sales Tax do? It will remove 26 mobile units that are ineffective at providing an educational environment. If you've been to our schools and you've been in those units, you know that they are not the place where our students need to learn. It will enhance our safety for our students and our security at our entrances. It will replace outdated infrastructure that we have got to address. And of course, it's going to construct new classrooms. And on the back, you will see a chart of what every school will receive and what the projected cost is. May I also thank Mr. Monday and Ms. Vanderhyde for working with us and helping us establish what a One-Cent Sales Tax will do. You know it generates about $3.8 million a year, which means that would be an eight-cent increase on our real estate tax, which is not something we want. So with that, we know that over the 19 years of the sales tax, that will give us around $50 million to work with when you consider there's also interest. So we're very grateful for them, for their involvement and helping us to assess. You also need to know, and my time is running out, that we will access every resource the state has to get the rest of all of this done. Every resource, all the grants, all the extra money, anywhere. The superintendent and the school board are committed to looking for that. Thank you for letting me be here. I appreciate your time. Please call me. Please come. Please participate.
Dr. Walker, hold on. Any comments, questions for Dr. Walker while she's here?
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for what you're doing. I supported it then. I'm supporting it now. And to me, it's no win situation. I mean, it's a no-brainer. It's just something we have to do because you're going to pay one way or the other. And by implementing this tax, you know, it lets other people that normally wouldn't pay help us out with what we need. These schools are in desperate need, so thank you so much.
You're so welcome, and I hope you'll You're so welcome, and I hope you'll let us come back and make a presentation.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Anytime. Thank you. Take care. Caitlin, anyone else?
Yes, Brenda Bowman.
Ms. Bowman, come on up. Good evening.
And I'm so glad Dr. Foster's here and is going to--
If you would, pull that microphone down a little bit.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I was saying, I'm so glad Dr. Foster's here because she asked about this tonight and didn't know that I was going to be speaking. So good evening to all of you, to Chairman Ingram, Vice Chairman Barxstel, to the board members and staff. My name is Brenda Bowman, and I reside in the Chatham-Blairs District. Tonight, I am providing information concerning a plan to erect a new love sign in Pittsivannia County. The former mobile Danville, Pittsivannia County Love Sign, established in 2018 through the Danville, Pittsivannia County Chamber Tourism Committee, was dismantled and is no longer in existence. As you know, tourism is no longer a division of the Chamber and is now part of the Economic Development Department for the City of Danville. You will recall that the new Director of Tourism, Lisa Merriweather, spoke before you last month. I have had meetings and conversations with Ms. Merriweather, as well as the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and with several of you in this regard. There are currently 278 love signs located throughout the state of Virginia, and there can be multiple love signs in any locality. I and several other volunteers who have a desire to see a sign visible to the community and to those traveling in and out of Pittsivannia County have begun approaching county organizations and businesses to assist with the development of a new permanent love sign. The Old Dominion Agricultural Center, a family-friendly tourism destination in our county, is currently discussing the possibility of erecting the sign on its property. This new sign will be visible to the thousands of visitors attending the events at ODAC and will highlight the assets of our county, as well as provide photo ops to be uploaded on social media. Visitors will also be directed to follow a love sign trail in Pittsivannia County by visiting the love sign at Wayside Park in Hurt and the one on the brick wall in Chatham. Amthor International, a major industry in Pittsivannia County, has agreed to build the steel frame structure, and other local businesses and organizations have been approached to adopt a letter by designing and building the items to be placed on the frame that depict our rich heritage, such as tobacco, cattle farming, wine vineyard, Lake and River Recreation, historical buildings, et cetera. I'm happy to say that two of the four letters have been adopted by Chatham Forest and Chatham Rotary, and the other two letters have been reserved pending approval from their organization's executive boards. Cost will be borne by the partners, and there is a $1,500 grant available through the Virginia Tourism Corporation. New love signs constructed or added to the Virginia Love Works website, and tourists seek out the signs when traveling throughout our state and region. This is just to keep you up to date on the progress as it moves forward. I am not asking for funds from the county, only for your support for this exciting project and for the county to sign the grant application that I will be preparing soon. Volunteers also be insulted to serve on the committee as we move forward. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll--
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Any questions? Okay. Caitlin?
All right. Heidi Jones.
Anyone else? I'm sorry?
Heidi Jones.
Ms. Jones, come on down. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. My name is Heidi Jones, and I live in the Chatham-Blairs District. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I have a small request for you. I would like you to consider joining in with the Town of Chatham and creating a safe exchange zone. At the town's last meeting, I gave my words in support for this proposal that was presented by Matt Bell. I shared in the meeting my past experience with having to meet with people in an area that's not so safe, or you don't feel so safe in, such as the tight squeeze shopping area. And in doing so, I feel that we would bring a place for the citizens to meet where they might can feel secure in meeting with a stranger if they have purchased something online, or also if they are meeting with an ill-tempered family member when exchanging children, as it were, and dropping off and picking up. The Town of Chatham did pass this motion for the safe exchange zone, and I thought it would be a great opportunity for the county and the town to work together to bring this to light. Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. All right, Caitlin, is that it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you all so much. Public hearings. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pittsivannia County Zoning Ordinance, the Board of Supervisors has empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pittsivannia County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interests of Pittsivannia County, its citizens, and its prosperity. So having said that, case number one, Ms. Ragsdale, come on up. This will be a public hearing, case number R-22-007. Good evening, Ms. Ragsdale.
Good evening. Case R-22-007, Barry and Jeanette Haskins have petitioned to rezone 1.48 acres located on State Road 821 Wheel Road in the Callens-Grettnau election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory building. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On March 1, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Haskins is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Emily. Ms. Haskins, well, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:52 PM. Mr. Haskins, either you or anyone else would like to come up and speak? Come on up, sir.
I'd just like to thank everyone, each and every one of y'all for your time and effort for looking at this and taking care of this procedure for me.
You are Mr. Haskins, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sir. All right. Thank you for being here. Anyone else want to speak on this? All right. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion--
Oh, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm so sorry. 7:53. Sorry about that. Okay, fire away.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve case R-22-007 as it was presented.
What about a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
All right, Mr. Ingram.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, Mr. Haskins, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. Thank you, sir. All right, this is case number two, number R-22-010. I'm going to ask Mr. Barxstel if she'd come back up and share that with us.
Case R-22-010, Mark Blanchett has petitioned to rezone 19.76 acres located on State Road 58 Martinsville Highway in the Tonsil election district from RC1 Residential Combined Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for a campground. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On March 1, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Blanchett is here to represent the petition.
All right. Thank you, Emily. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:55 PM. Sir, would you come forward if you'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up.
I recently bought this RV park in Axton, then got notified that it had to be rezoned to be within compliance, so I'm just hoping that I can get it rezoned.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Anyone else up to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:56 PM. Since my computer's down, I would normally read that, and I'm in support of it, but my friend, colleague, Mr. Dalton's going to read it.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve case R-22-010 as it was presented.
All right. What about a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All right, go ahead and cast your vote, gentlemen.
All right, Mr. Ingram.
Yes. All right, sir, your property has been rezoned. Thank you so much. You can stay or you can leave. Thank you. Okay, other public hearings. Each person addressed to the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and/or his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. So having said that, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:57, and this is PCC Chapter 35 of the zoning ordinance. Ms. Ragsdale, I thank you up again. Thank you, Emily.
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending that we make the proposed changes that were included in your packet to the A1 zoning classification. Currently, in the A1 district, off-site parking is allowed as a byright use, and what off-site parking means is that you could, any large event, you could use any location for parking. And with increased events happening in the county, we're seeing larger agricultural properties used for strictly parking for events that aren't located on that property. So staff is proposing that that be moved under special use permit, and what that would do would allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to place conditions, if they saw fit, on that use to address any potential adverse effects, such as traffic control, things like that that might arise with parking in an off-site area.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Gentlemen, what about a motion to approve this change?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve PCC Chapter 35 change.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. What about a second?
Mr. Chairman, can I get you to close that, please?
Do what now? Oh, yeah, I got to close it. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
7:58. Time slips up on me.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any further comments, questions? All right, gentlemen, go ahead and cast your vote.
I'd just like to make a comment--
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
I'd just like to say this would give us the county, because they have to get the special use permit, a better opportunity to verify with public safety, Sheriff's Department, state police, and all in those particular cases, because we have experienced some venues where actually the parking, off-site parking, created additional problems that really were not foreseen, and had we had an opportunity to take a good look at them, we could have certainly mitigated some of those problems. So that's why I support this.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? All right, where we at now?
Ready for votes.
Yep. Go ahead and cast your vote.
All right, Mr. Ingram.
Yes. At 8:00 PM, I'm going to open up public hearing, PCC 6-6-3. This will be property exempt of classification or destination. First Pentecostal Holiness Church. I had Ms. Robin Gore down, but I don't think she's here. Who can present for--
I'll take it. City-- Mr. Chairman, I'll take it.
Thank you, sir.
First Pentecostal Holiness Church filed an application for potential tax exemption on two parcels of real estate that they own. They are a church, so they are eligible for said tax exemption. This application was sent to the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office, forward to the board, and a public hearing is required if the board desires to amend our code to add them to that tax exemption. Based on the current tax rate, if these two parcels of real estate are granted a tax exemption, the county will be losing about $2,900 in annual tax revenue. So after you conduct the public hearing, if you desire to amend the county code to add them like you have for many other churches, you would just need an affirmative motion doing so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Anybody representing the church?
Yes.
Come forward, sir. If you would, just give us your name, please, and where you reside at.
I'm Elsie Walker, Jr., the church treasurer and administrator. The church has the property there in the Chatham-Blairs District. I'm just here basically to ask for your approval on this amendment and to answer any questions. And the church did want me to request your consideration in refunding any previously paid taxes that we might be eligible for.
Good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. I shall close the public hearing at 8:02 PM. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve adding the addition of First Pentecostal Holiness Church. The property is located on Route 41. It will be a good addition to that community with the dense population there, and also like to request that they be reimbursed their back. I think we go back, maybe, three years?
I have to get with the Commissioner of Revenue--
Go back as far as--
Distagatory.
--what is standard operating procedure.
Okay. What about a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Dudley, any further discussion? All right. All right, gentlemen, cast your vote.
You got it.
She's going to take care of it.
All right, and Mr. Ingram.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, you guys are officially exempt, and you'll get some money back. Thank you so much. Y'all take care. Okay, this is a public hearing, PCC 2-12, open public hearing at 8:04. Chris Slim, this is yours, sir. Come on up here. Welcome, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hopefully, this one will be easy. Mr. Shorter, and I appreciate him doing this, brought to our attention that we had a conflict in our county ordinance versus state ordinance, or state code, and in regards to duplicate dog tags, our ordinance said we could charge up to $2, and we can only charge up to $1, and this is to amend that code.
Okay. All righty. Anyone sign up to speak on that?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:05. Thank you, Chris. All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Have a motion?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Barxstel. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Any further comments, questions? All right, cast your vote.
All right, and Mr. Ingram.
Yes. Item 11, unfinished business.
We have none.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. 12, new business.
We had two additions. Do you have it in the system, Caitlin?
Yes. The first one is the interim county administrator contract renewal.
Yeah, we are looking at extending Mr. Monday's tenure on a monthly basis, if that's okay.
Berkeley, Berkeley contract.
Yeah, Berkeley, I'm so sorry. Yeah. To allow him to work an additional month as we deem necessary. That's good with you, Mr. Monday, correct?
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you, sir.
And that's on a month-to-month, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. What about a motion to approve that?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Barxstel, thank you, sir. Any discussion? All right, cast your vote, gentlemen.
All right, Mr. Ingram.
Yes. Okay, what's next?
And this is the item that was pulled from consent. This is the DSS appointment.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
This is the one that was pulled from consent to be discussed after Mr. Scares.
Okay, I believe that's you, Mr. Scares. Go right ahead.
Yeah, the only reason I wanted to discuss is, last year, there were some very vocal public comments made by you in the Chatham Star Tribune, and I felt it might be a little bit of a conflict of interest for you to serve on the DSS Board. I'm not calling you out on this to denigrate you or anything, but I believe right now our DSS system, even though they're having some issues keeping new employees hired, the director has done a fantastic job. Almost every metric that the state uses to gauge the health of a department, he's probably knocking it out of the park at 100% on almost every category, and I don't, I'm not saying that it will be a disruption, but in the light of those public comments that were made, I just think it might be better to assign someone else to that Board. I'm not asking for it, by the way, so I've enjoyed my vacation this year, so as far as I'm concerned, just reconsider that. I know it's your purview. You're the chair. You can put whoever you want on that. I just hope you would reconsider and allow someone else to serve on that Board. That's all I have. Thank you.
Let me ask, if there was anything specific that I allegedly said that you'd like to enlighten me on?
I can post the article. It was concern someone in your family and the care that they were receiving, and again, it was kind of undercutting not only the court systems, but also DSS and the whole system, and I'm a little worried that that might become an issue once you serve on the Board. And again, you're going to have to deal with a Board that has seven other members, so it's not like you're going to have free rein to do whatever you want. You're going to have to deal with seven other members, and it could cause some consternation with that Board. I'm just throwing it out there and asking for your reconsideration, maybe putting someone else that doesn't have that baggage to go on to the Board.
I think most of you know I have a pretty long career in law enforcement, and I was on the first state multidisciplinary team dealing with child sexual abuse and child abuse in general, so my heart and passion has, for many, many years, been at working with social services and doing what was best by the employees there, and more specifically back then, putting bad guys in jail. And so, when this came about, I felt like I'd be more sort of an asset, and I don't think that, when you go back to 2018 and what we went through collectively, you and I, I don't have any more baggage then than I do now. So, I talked with Mr. Barstow, and we agreed to swap boards, and he was gracious to agree, and I think that I can not only be an asset to that Board, but as you probably recall, I was instrumental in finding the director, so I will somewhat take credit for that. But anyway, I appreciate your comments, your thought, but I do not feel compelled to remove myself from that Board, so that's my two cents. Anybody else?
I'll just make a comment on it. You know, I will always support the fact the chairman has a right to do his appointments. You know, I would say that to save yourself and your family maybe from some scrutiny, maybe you just want to reconsider, because there has been a lot of history going all the way back to 2018, and we certainly have some people on the Board that could fulfill the remainder of this term in that situation. I just, from a standpoint of not being critical of anybody or anything, that it might be something that you just want to think about, pray about, or whatever to keep you. And we always want to be, as Board members and as a Board, as much as possible, try to be above reproach, so, and, you know, public criticism, so.
I agree. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, what is the reason for the switch? That's what I'd like. For you and Jess, you put him on this Board at the beginning of the year.
I did.
And just tell me the reason of the switch.
Mm-hmm. I felt like that I'd be a better fit on the Social Services Board, and need I remind you that there's members on this Board that are very instrumental in putting people on that Board to get rid of Sherry Flanagan. So, this nonsense that y'all bringing forth is just a continuation of the WWF smackdown that I've been used to for four months running. So, you know, to appease the members that you guys put on that Board, I'm not going to yield to that. I put myself on that Board to do good, not to do bad.
That's fine.
If your members on there don't like it, they can resign, but I'm not, because I just like being in this position, and from the time I was 17 years old, all I've ever wanted to do is serve people, and my history shows that I have served people from that point until now. And as far as any ulterior motive to put myself on that Board, it's just a better fit, because I'm very familiar with social services, the importance and the importance of supporting somebody like Chris Spain, as well as all the employees, and making sure that the children of this county are served the very best possible way.
I want to be, I want to be very clear about one statement that you made, because you directed it, I'm assuming, and maybe I'm assuming incorrectly. My representative on that Board was there long before any of the things came up with Ms. Flanagan.
Sure.
And has been reappointed, so just for the public's information, my appointee was done long before any of that stuff started and has remained there. So, you know, don't wholesale put me in a pot.
And I'd also like to say, I mean, I didn't bring up anyone that's serving on the current Board to throw anyone under the bus, including you, so I don't think it was right of you to bring them into this mix. All I'm trying to say is you made some very public statements, and there's, I think, a conflict of interest because of what you've dealt with, not only the CSA people and the DSS Board. I think there could be some complications there in the future, and that's all I'm pointing out. And you don't have to throw anyone else under the bus. You can throw me under the bus as much as you want, but you don't have to denigrate anyone that's currently serving on the Board, because they've done an excellent job, along with Chris Spain. Thank you.
Yeah, well, see, unfortunately, I did get word to one of the members that was appointed by somebody on this Board, that they didn't want me coming on the Board, and it's really not their call. As far as a family member, sadly, he lives in another locality, is not under any services or supervision by anybody. I have nobody connected with my family there. And you know, when you talk about a passion to serve, most time it comes from a heart, and when your family has been victimized, as long as you can do so in an honest and ethical way, I think they are probably your better advocates. And so, when I say I'm a better fit for that position, in talking with my colleague, Mr. Barstow, that's where it came from. And I don't know how much more I can say, I just didn't realize you guys would be so against that move, but I'm not removing myself, so. Any other comments, questions?
I just asked the reason for the switch, that's all I wanted, so.
Did I give you a good answer?
You give me an answer.
No, did I give you a good answer?
You give me an answer, so.
Yeah. Anyone else? Yeah, see, the welfare of these children and our employees and the director are much more important than this rhetoric, and maybe someday we'll get past it, when people grow up, decide to act like adults, but until that day, we'll just fight on. All right, what we got next? Mr. Scares, no outburst. If you want to say something, go out in the parking lot, but not in here, sir. Would you ask him to leave, please? I politely asked you not to do that. You're not going to hijack this meeting. You're not going to hijack this meeting, Mr. Scares. Goodbye. Anything else, Kayla?
We are down to matters from work session.
Okay, matters from work session.
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We are going to go back into closed session, I assume, or we?
No, no, no. We're still sticking with another day, right?
Okay. Board member reports. I'll start with you, Mr. Scares.
Yeah, I only have one thing. I talked to Rod Compton today. He is the Director of, I believe, Property Tax at the Virginia Department of Taxation, and he said that we could request their help in finding those, the values of those 4,800-plus structures. Again, it may not be as many as 4,800. I'm assuming the feedback he gave me was correct, that Ms. Gord has supposedly verified those new structures that are out there that accumulate, could possibly have a value of $100 million in a tax value of maybe $600,000 for our tax revenues, so I'm a little wary about that not being addressed, and we'll make that an agenda item for our next Board meeting for us to discuss that. If we send a resolution to the Virginia Department of Taxation, they will come down here and find the values of those 48 new structures that were identified by the bright minds. We have all the identifying information and pictures of the structures, and I know a lot of them are on commercial properties, so we're missing out on, at minimum, probably half a million dollars worth of tax revenues, and I think this Board needs to address that and address that with a constitutional officer. Regardless, the Virginia Department of Taxation will come down here for free and do the assessment on these properties so we can add them to the tax rolls. We do not need to wait another four years to add these properties to our property rolls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dudley, come down to you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Thank you again for everybody that had a presentation. Want to thank our staff, Board, the good job that you guys have done. Clarence, you've done a wonderful job. Thank you for bringing us to this point. Appreciate everything you've done. Jay Vaden, you do a great job keeping us out of trouble. Thank you a lot.
Mr. Cheshire?
Just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. This is actually my first full session. I had my first round of chemo Thursday, and thanks, Lord, not a reaction yet. I probably can go out in the parking lot and probably pass out, but I'm very grateful to be here tonight. Compared to where I was two months ago, it's not even the same time. I appreciate the Board. I appreciate their candid thoughts, and hopefully, we can get some things done here in the next couple sessions, but I just want to tell everybody how grateful I am for all the thoughts and prayers during this time.
Good to see you, Tim. Thank you so much. Mr. Warren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a comment in relationship to the school system and the sales tax. I appreciate them starting earlier. I can't actually understand why it didn't pass the last time. It's a no-brainer when you have an opportunity to have people from outside your community help assist you with paying your bills, which the bills are going to be there regardless, and it just doesn't make sense not to allow others to assist with that. Danville, fortunately for them, benefits greatly from the Mills Tax, where we go in and pay, and Sales Tax, where we go in there into their communities and purchase items, so it just makes good logical sense to me to have folks assist us with paying those, and it doesn't put all the burden on property owners. So, I definitely support that. I'd like to thank Ms. Bowman for being here tonight and giving her time and all to re-erect a love sign and promote tourism in Pennsylvania County that will benefit all the citizens going forward. I thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Barstow?
I want to thank Dr. Foster for her present, present citation, Dr. Walker, and Mrs. Bowman. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank all the citizens for being here tonight, but thank all the staff members for working hard and keeping us straight, and the Board here trying to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me go back to something Mr. Scares was saying about these structures. Yeah, I agree. If they're out there, we need to surely take a look at them, but when we invalidated the reassessment, looking at these 4,800 structures is going to be part of that New Deal, and I think it's only fair, because part of the reason we invalidated the reassessment is that that drone was capturing concrete pads and dilapidated buildings, so I'm not sure if that number is totally accurate, but regardless, we need to do a good, honest, fair reassessment. So, that's where we're going. We're sort of in a holding pattern with that. You know, recently, the Public Safety Sheriff's Office responded to a call. Somebody had over 68 dogs in their home, and they seized these animals and took them over to the pet center, and I can't imagine how difficult that was, but I did want to compliment our animal control officers and our pet center staff for doing a phenomenal job. Unfortunately, they've had to shut down the center to take care of these animals, but they're doing a good job as far as that goes. Again, I got to continue to thank our fire and rescue volunteers. They do a fabulous job, and the ARPA money that we have talked about multiple times was in the consent agenda, and all the departments that applied for ARPA money for specific needs, that money has been approved, so don't worry, you're going to get your check. And I do want to congratulate Chris Lint for your promotion. He has moved up from our Public Safety Director to what's called Director of Operations, and not really sure why, but that was a choice he made, and he got the job. So, having said that, I think that pretty much concludes our meeting. So, having said that, meet in adjournment.